Six oh seven, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Gonzalez, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of court.
Renee Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Navarro.
Here.
Ral Duran.
Here.
Mayor Eliá García.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia-Lopez.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court.
Item number four, public comment.
Our first speaker, Renee Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, you have three minutes.
Ah, another drill. The reason why I'm doing this is because yesterday I was at the Socorro Independent, San Luisario Independent School District because they were talking about the, the sale of the El Paso Electric. What I want to talk to you guys is that we need a special meeting because we need to address that issue as well. Because it's going to affect us and it's going to affect all our residents as well. Because if they sell that, they're going to do away with a, with the, what is it? Rate forty-one, which is for schools and hospitals and all that. So, not only that, but our rates will go high. So, you know, what I want to bring to council is have a special meeting so we can talk about it because they postponed it to January tenth. For me, it's very important, guys, because we can see if we can help them try to buy it. That's why. And then another thing is that we went to the Public Investment Fund this past two weeks. And it was great. We learned how to invest our money. We made about seven thousand dollars, right? Something like that, Charlie? Something like that. Well, anyways, but, but what we're trying to do is that we're trying to better our funds. We're not trying to pay the banks to keep our money. We're trying to invest it and get something in return at the same time. So, it was a good thing that we've learned. We, we're going to talk to Mr. Castellano, our finance director, so that we can see what else we can do to try to help the city with our revenue issues and stuff. So, I just want to say that those are the two things that I wanted to address to you guys. Oh, by the way, in the MPO, we did get our Se Francisco School. And I want people to understand that those, that is, that comes from the state and federal funding. So, please do the census. Because the more people we have, the more money the state and federal gives us, that we're able to apply for that fund. And we'll only pay twenty percent. So, a million-dollar project, it'll only cost two hundred thousand dollars for the city of Socorro. So, that means that if we have a million dollars, we can do five projects. So, think about the great things we can do. Do the census, people. Thank you.
Tom Hick. Mr. Hick, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I'm here to discuss the issue that's still pending on the eight thirty-three Horizon Boulevard. It's commonly known as Socorro Iron and Metal General Store, according to the business registration certificate that I have a copy in front of me. That's license number B zero three one three dash two four one eight. C two general commercial zoning. That business registration certificate was issued on five nineteen two thousand seventeen and expired at three fifteen two thousand eighteen. On the search through the city records that we asked for to give us copies of anything pursuant to that piece of property being used for a truck terminal, there is no certificate of issuance of any form of that. There's no certificate of occupancy that we can find. There's no conditional use permit, no variances, existing or proposed use to the buildings or alterations, permit fees, temporary certificates, existing building certificates of use, certificates of completion. My issue is, when we were here last month, I asked to become a witness and all of us that have signed the petition to be a witness at the hearing that was held on the tenth where Mr. Gondra was in court and there was no representation from the city of Socorro to my knowledge. I was not called to be a witness. And the judge granted, according to our Freedom of Information Act, a extension was granted for the Honorable Judge Valerio Reyes for February eleventh two thousand two zero. This business is in complete disregard for all of your ordinances that we have been able to find. This business has been nothing but an issue with all of the residents for the last three city council meetings. My concern is why the city attorney, may I ask this question of you, sir? Why was no one there when they were talking to the judge about this issue of the extension? Why weren't we called? I would suppose that maybe it was an oversight, but I would like for council to take a second, third, or fourth look at what's transpiring here.
Mr. Hick, your time is up.
The whole neighborhood is here tonight again and will be back again if necessary. Thank you.
Lorena Rodriguez.
Hi, good evening. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to just go off by that. I do have his business's registration certificate out of the Freedom of Information Act. I also want to let you know that his business name is Socorro Iron and Metal General Store, which he's running two businesses out of one permit. And I believe that's not allowed. Even on his business registration certificate, it's not even signed. It's not signed. It expired on March fifteen two thousand eighteen. So, he's basically one year and nine months it's been expired. Once again, there's no signature and there's two businesses running off that, off that permit. He doesn't even have a permit. He doesn't have anything. And I was looking under, under the USDOT Socorro Iron and Metal LLC business. His physical address is ten seven three six Thunder Road, Socorro, Texas. So, I don't know where his business is. Is it on Thunder Road or is it on Burt Road? And this is under the USDOT. I also wanted to let you know he's still using Burt Road. His trucks are still using them. He's been told by the zoning board not to use West Burt Road. His trucks continue to use it. He's still using eight thirty-three West Burt Road. You could still hear the generators. You could still hear him working on those tires. The noise is excruciating. It's going, it's impossible. The dust that is created. I have livestock on, just across the street from him. We have issues with our herder cattle, with them tearing up, infections of the eye, where we never had that before. We are coughing inside the house. My eyes are hurting and I'm not exaggerating here. That dirt is just a plume of dirt. I also want to let you know that under, under his C two, Division nine C two general commercial district, section forty-six through four twelve purpose, he's not permitted to have his business there. He's not. There's no variance. He didn't ask to, can I please use? It's a scrap metal business. It's under C two. And he's, under here, there's nothing here that says that he should have a scrap iron business, semi-trucks in that business. Nowhere in this list. And that's the purposes used, uses, section forty-six through four thirteen. Nowhere does it say semi-trucks. Nowhere does it say repair shop, tire repair shop, semi-truck engine repair shop. Nowhere. So, he shouldn't be on that property at all. I also want to, if I still have time, I want to hand out these pictures. These pictures here, if you had them out. He had meters out there. And under the, under the international plumbing tunnel.
Ms. Rodriguez, your time is up.
He's not supposed to have meters on that property next to a commercial driveway. He should be shut down.
Daniel Portugal.
Another friend of mine.
Mr. Portugal, you have three minutes.
Okay, I've been asking for this picture before in the previous one. And I wanted to give you pictures to either the mayor or somebody who got the, I don't understand why I want to take these pictures. This is a picture of a roof that was broken by the trees in his property. A tree that's currently going through removal of my property that I'm going to speak about. That's already permanently applied. Okay? Thank you very much.
I do request that the zoning commission denied this proposed amendment for the commercial property. And I understand that Horizon and such as North Loop, which is Horizon, which is a farm road, twelve eighty-one, and North Loop, which is a farm road of seventy-six, that in that area, we are protected by agricultural law. And our agricultural law says the storage value of property is over fifty years and I've been there for over six decades. So, six decades, we have had horses, steers, cattle, chickens, and so forth. And one thing that I'd like to mention is would allow horns from the diesel picture that I have there that has startled a horse. And the horse, you know, ran into a fence and it got killed. And look, he's covered in his face because of a hole in one ear, one month old when it died. And the property that I have, the damage to my roof and the trees that are currently falling on my property, I still like to have an insurance, so I can file a claim. And I would respectfully like to have it. But as far as, I would just like to note that everybody know that as a residential owner of foreign land, I accept that inherent responsibility. And that's something he should do as far as a residential property currently has. And if he's going to give it commercial and he can't even take care of residential, then he shouldn't even be denied, given the opportunity to give commercial on the street is understandable. But to spearhead the death of man that he wants to is far too big debt to the property that there is for foreign land and children with all types of habitats included, bison and large animals, which is of course are horses, cows, and so forth. So, with pictures I've submitted before, I feel like to say that there is damage to my property extensively, that I would like him to please respectfully take care of. Will we give you the insurance and I'd like to file a claim? Thank you.
Pat Gardea. Ms. Gardea, you have three minutes.
Okay. I don't live on Burt, but I live on the street we saw on Patty Hill. And I walk my dog down there all the time. I'm just, I'm here for the neighbors. I really don't know them that good, but I, I feel for them because they have to put up with all that crap. And what I don't understand, I've lived here since eighty-one. You guys have the right to change stuff, but you're letting the gandaras get away with everything. It started ever since the father was a mayor, the son was a mayor, and then one of them was an alderman. They think they can do whatever they want because they're a ganda. You guys got to step up and show them, they're just like everybody else. They have to go by the law. But you guys aren't doing that. This is going on almost two years, a year and a half, two years. And it came back up because they changed the wording. And that's why it came back up. You guys turned it down last time, but ever since then, it's gotten junkier and it's gotten worse. And you guys don't do anything. And I, I'm here all the time because I want my neighbors and I want my neighborhood to be nice and friendly and not a piece of crap. And when we were here last month for the city planning, the gentleman, I don't know his name, but he said, "At this end, I'll be here." And he was going, "Well, they built a trucking company up off of Horizon by the Petro." Well, that was desert. There was nothing there. These people have been here as long as I've been alive. Their parents, their grandparents, and your men, the gandaras, do whatever they want. It has to stop. Thank you.
Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Good evening, city council staff, members of the community. I, I have a, I have a, I have something very quick I'd like to address. Couple of things. First thing is, most of you know me because I come to this meeting, these meetings tirelessly. I usually don't miss. And I usually am here to speak my mind, to give my point of view, because I care. I'm not here for any other reason. I care about the city. I care about the people. I care about the staff. I care about you guys, even though maybe it doesn't seem like that to some of you, but I do. I care about our officers. I, I care, which is why I'm here. And it's a little frustrating when I come up here and I speak and sometimes some of you have, you know, kind of tune me out. Sometimes don't look at me, sometimes don't pay attention, and only hear half of what I have to say. And I say that because last time, for example, I'm only going to give one example because I don't want to waste too many, you know, too much time. I talked about the early voting happening at Chayo Polaca. And this is something that I've mentioned before. I talked about how it might give a negative impression to our young people who use that facility by closing it down instead of allowing them to see the process at work. I absolutely care about voting. I'm a deputized voter registrar. I register people all the time. I believe that voting is important. I want people to vote. My point last time about closing Chayo Polaca for the early voting was that it was going to be closed for a city of El Paso election. Not to say that we shouldn't have it open. Again, my problem is that there were seven people that used that facility. Seven people in ten days, eight of which, the Chayo Polaca Center was closed off to the rest of the community. Now, we talk about privacy. I absolutely care about privacy when I'm voting. I, I look around and make sure no one's looking at me. I care about privacy. But there are private rooms inside Chayo Polaca. So, it's still hard for me to understand why we are closing down an entire facility and not allowing our young people to see this process in action, when I think it's an important thing for them to see. Just like maybe some of them see it when, when we vote here, whoever votes here at H. D. Hilli. You know, maybe they don't see the machines, but they see people coming and going. They know that some voting is happening over there. I'm sure some of them take a little field trip over there and look at the machines during the day.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
Thank you.
Guillermo Gandara Junior. Mr. Gandara, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, council members, thank you for hearing us this evening. The reason I'm here is just to, you know, I saw that it was an item put on the agenda, item thirty-five. I came to court on the tenth to discuss our property. And before that, you had a council meeting, I think a week or so before that. Before that council meeting, I had one of, one of my attorneys call up to, to ask for an extension. To my understanding, because of my, one of my attorneys gave me, told me, "Mr. Gandara, there's no need to go because of the fact that we made the city aware that we were asking for an extension." That is something that happens historically whenever attorneys want to get, want to talk to the city or talk to city attorneys, or even the city managers, or even the council, to discuss, see if there's any options that we can actually come to terms with, with us and, and with the constituents or the business owner at hand. The fact that I wasn't here was because of my attorney said, "Mr. Gandara, there's no need for you to go." So, I apologize for not being here last. But I am here today. And I went with, I went on the tenth with, with, of course, the judge, and she got me additional two months for us to go ahead and, and continue while our attorneys go ahead and contact the city and to see if there's any manner in which we can actually come to an understanding. Now, if you, if, I don't know if any of you have all gone to see my property. It's actually on Horizon. I have almost two or three hundred feet of frontage. Now, Horizon is a major thoroughfare of Socorro. That's where all the trucks, all the businesses are. Directly across from my business is Celestia. On any given day, there's anywhere between ten to twenty trucks, but that's another business owner. So, I'm not here to discuss the business. That's directly from my property. Now, the property that I have in front is, is own C two. My trucks will continue to be there because that is, that is my business. The reason I asked for an addition for this property in the back for C two was so that I would not have to go in through Burt. I can go in through the front of my property in Horizon, which I've got two entrances. By all means, if there's anything we can come to terms to, we don't go in through Burt. We can come to the front. And in order for my trucks to actually go in and come back around, I need to go into the property in the back so that we can come up to the front. Now, I'm not the only semi-company that's here. I mean, there's a semi-company that's being built up on top. There's another one that's just down the street. There's one that's right next to my property. What I don't seem to understand is why I wasn't given the right to come back with my attorney. It was brought up. I mean, I've never heard of that. It's never been done, even.
Mr. Gandara, your time is up.
Well, I thank you very much. I just want to go. Thank you.
Ray Portugal. Mr. Portugal, you have three minutes.
Yeah, you're always talking about three minutes, but we've been here before and talking about three minutes and three minutes all the time. You talk about the pledge of allegiance, justice for all, but apparently it hasn't been happening. We don't get justice. Almost six decades over here on Spark Circle. And God is saying he doesn't use Burt. He uses Burt Road. I seen him. I haven't been on the property, on my property, eight twenty Spark Circle. And just like our neighbors are saying, it's full of dust. I couldn't believe all the time of all the dirt and dust comes through it. We have a lot of trees planted there and that dust is really bad. I couldn't believe it was coming from where his trucks come on his property and dust is everywhere. And when he says, "Yeah, I was here with my lawyer. We got denied." He wasn't here the first time when his lawyer was here talking to you council members. Where was he? He wasn't here. He didn't care. And now he comes here. He didn't come all the time. Does he say the truth about going? He goes that there's other truck lines there. Yes. The city of Socorro did real well on making parks over there on Burt Road. You want to ruin another neighborhood? You know, there's a grassroots effort when people run for election. And I guess that's the only time we're going to be able to do anything is when election time comes. So, who's wasting time? Who's justice for all? What's going on? Is something going underneath something? You know, six decade, six decades there is something. And you all can't see, all the neighbors wanting a residence, well, so be. For words of justice, when you stand up for the pledge of allegiance, you just have three minutes. That's fine, three minutes. But time after time after time? Come on, get real. When is this going to end? The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one. So, what's happening? Thank you.
Maria Valdez. Ms. Valdez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Again, we're here, I don't know how many times, we got to come and state our case. My neighbors are awesome. They come with love and passion for what they believe in. They've brought in proof. They've brought in examples, pictures, videos. Obviously, their property is getting damaged. Kids can't walk and play. Neighbors can't walk their dogs. Animals are getting killed. Are we going to wait for a human to get killed? I don't know if that's what it takes, but why does it have to get to that point? Mr. Gandara is here today. Usually, he sits back there, he, with the smug look. He's got to rock back and forth. He's got to bully my neighbors. He's got to talk trash and do all this stuff. Where's his family? That property is under his name and his wife. Do they live on there? No. We live by Burt, Tortugas Horizon. And even though I'm not within the two hundred feet to where I get notices, my neighbors let me know that we're going to have a meeting. And it's taking time away from my family to be here again and again. You guys want to start adding up how much tax dollars we've spent to try to fix that place for it to just get ruined, to slap them on the wrist? He sits there with a smug look on his face. We go to events, graduations, and when the name Gandara is mentioned, it's booed. Where's your pride? And he talks about it being his only business. I'm sure he has his hand in the cookie jar somewhere else. There's businesses in Dallas under the Gandara's name. They like to show it off on social media. If Gary cares so much about, about Socorro and everything he does, he's the one helping out his brother with these trucks, making the noise, the contamination in our canal water, where we get our fruits, where we feed our animals from. I don't understand why we have to keep continuing to do this and put my neighbors through what they're going through. Their health is at risk. Animals, what else is it that we need to do? Again, we come with our, with our life. We come with all we have to let you guys know how we feel and what it's doing to us. My daughter's five. I have a nineteen-year-old. My mom's in her seventies. They've been here way longer than I have. What is it going to take for us to continue to live the life that we want to? Instead of having to continue to fight, we want to enjoy it. And what does he want? Oh, let's come to an agreement. Let me pay more. Let me pay more. Why don't you go pay to be somewhere else? Or make yourself a house where you have your business and see how you like living there with the noise, the pollution, and everything that's on there? Thanks.
Mayor, those were our speakers.
Item number five, presentation by Fall two thousand nineteen High School interns.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you today is the final presentation for the Fall two thousand nineteen High School interns. We do have a new surprise for you within this presentation, which you'll hear about in a little bit. We do want to recognize our special guest from Socorro High School, Mrs. Nicole Matsuda, who leads the Business Practicum, and Mr. Anaya from America's High School. With that being said, this will be their final presentation.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. This is our Fall two thousand nineteen internship. Good afternoon. My name is Christos Keheva and I'm in the administration, administration department. I'm a senior at Socorro High School and I'm in Business Practicum with Ms. Matsuda. Being an administrative assistant, my responsibilities include taking calls, providing service to customers, and helping file documents. I also help fill up the copy machine daily and sort out and file in mail. I also clean the conference room at the end of the day and provide help to other city hall workers. My experience during this time was very interesting. I learned many basic employment skills such as how to copy, print, scan, and file different documents. I now feel better prepared for future jobs that may be in the future. And thankfully, with this experience, I can get a job related to this internship easier and faster. As an administrative assistant, my future plans after high school include going to college at E P C C for the basics, then to U T E P. After that, I would like to graduate with a bachelor's degree in sonography and start my career as a sonographer. Then I would like to get a master's degree in sonography. My understanding of the city of Socorro before the internship was pretty vague. I didn't know much about it or what it had to offer. But after being a part of it, I learned just how much work goes into being an employee and how dedicated each member really is. I've gained I've gained a whole new respect for the employees here. My favorite part of the internship would have to be the first event because it was something new and really exciting. I really enjoyed getting a glimpse of the semester to come. Now I'd like to pass it to my colleague.
Hello, my name is Anna Ramirez, and I'm an intern in the Information Technology, and my su- site supervisor is Esteban Gonzalez. I'm a student at Socorro High School, and I'm in the Business Practicum with Ms. Matsuda. Every day I'm at internship, we do something different. For me and my site supervisor, we tend to go to different departments, and when we're at these departments, we, um, set up computer, um, systems, or we be setting up scanners, techn- telephones, or printers. Um, the most recent thing we've been doing, um, is setting up the new network for the new police headquarters. Being a part of the IT department is actually only one aspect of my internship. Being an intern means also being part of the community. You will see us inter- interns in most of the community events helping, such as my, one of my most favorite events was breakfast that was held in October. My understanding of the city of Socorro is different from what I thought. Since I have not lived in the city of Socorro for long, I did not think there was much to offer. But after my internship, I realized there was so much more to the city than I thought, such as the community events that is held constantly and the time and effort the people who work here put into making our lives better. Now I would like to pass the podium to the next intern.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, good evening, sorry. My name is Ashley Espinoza, I'm a senior in the Business Practicum Program at Socorro High School with my teacher, Mrs. Matsuda, and I'm in the Department of Recreation and Special Events. Um, I hope you guys recognize me. I'm a returning intern for the fourth term. Um, what keeps me returning to this internship is the diversity that I get in the department that I'm at. It's different every day from, you get your basic office skills every day, but then you get your events, which is totally different. I especially like that for each event, Victor doesn't assign the same task, so I never know what I'm going to be doing, and I always learn something new at every event. My understanding of the city of Socorro before and after the internship, before I started, I didn't really think that the city of Socorro was an actual city. By that, I mean I didn't know it was something that needed to be put on a license or an ID, like for your address, for instance. And now I see that it is a city. We get funding, like, for example, with the census coming up, which is very important for us. And what I did this year, a lot, I did interact with the census, so I, I learned a lot from doing so because I didn't know what it was, I didn't know how important it was to our community. Uh, my favorite part of the internship has been the people, aside from the employees in my department. I've grown fond of the employees in other departments. For example, I worked with Renee at the Veterans Parade, and we had great conversation. I've talked to mayor, I've talked to each councilmember before, and I've built, I believe, great relationships with everybody in the city. And I know that the people that I've built relationships with here, I can take them with me in the future. Like, they can help me with, uh, recommendation letters, or advice, or to lead me in the right direction for the career that I want to take. My plans for the future are to major in business and minor in management, hopefully at Texas State University. Um, now I would like to pass the podium over to the following intern.
Good afternoon, my name is Alejandra Dilwadu, I'm a senior at Americas High School with, in the Libertas Program with my teacher, Mr. Anaya. The Libertas Program is a pre-law or government internship, internship, I'm sorry, program that allows us to understand the study of both, and gives us a chance to take an internship our senior year, for, such as the city of Socorro. And my department is the Municipal Court with my site supervisor Cynthia Candalaria and Monique Velate. My understanding before the internship and after. Before the internship, I always thought the city was just boring, had nothing to offer. But after applying to the internship, I realized the city puts in a lot of work to the community and gives opportunities to constituents. My favorite part of this internship was meeting the variety, meeting a variety of people, meeting people that make an impact on people's, other people's lives. For example, when the Recreation Center made events, example, the Winter Fest and Fight Forum. My plans after high school would be take a semester at UTEP and then leave off to book cap with the Marines to become a judge advocate. Some of my responsibilities when I did this internship was usher defendants to the courtroom, assist a job, assist a judge during, during hearings as needed, um, do general clerical work, uh, getting files for the front desk, provide customer service, and answer files. These are some of the pictures we have during our internship. Um, as you see in front of you, we left some brochures, gives us a little insight of more to, more information on each and every, each and every one of us. And then, that concludes the 2019 Fall Internship Final Presentation. Would any, would anyone have, oh my god, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to ask any questions?
No, I just, I just, I, yeah, you know.
I wanted to give him the opportunity first.
You know, you know, you know, it's, it's great seeing you guys here because, thing you, like, you guys said before is, um, did not know that this was a city, a functional city. Um, now you know that we are, you know, you pay taxes and, you know, streets are paved and we put lights and stuff like that. Um, but one of the things is that I like to see, like, when you return, we, we saw you the first time, and you were very shy, now you're like confident, so it's good to see that you're comfortable, that you, with your surroundings, and that you're learning, basically, of what the city has to offer. And it's great to see that, you know, our young members of the community trying to get, uh, a feel for what it is to be working for a municipality, whether it be here or somewhere else, but you're getting the taste of what it is to be in the public. So, good for you.
Ms. Ellos?
Just, um, I just want to thank you for being part of our family here in Socorro. You're right at the beginning of, um, something great with our youth. I know it started pretty much when I came on board, so I want to thank you for staying with us, for, um, helping us or helping our staff, because I know you were a tremendous help to our staff. And at the same time, at the same token, I'm sure you learned tremendously, uh, for your future, and hopefully one day we'll see you up here, if, if you live in this city. Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Well, I'm not going to ask a question, but, um, I do want to thank you for your service, for one. Two, um, you've started, even though you were interning and you're volunteering, but you've started a very important service, community service, you, and so, or rather public service. And that takes many forms, and it doesn't have to be paid. In fact, the best service is usually the one that's not paid because you're doing it out of your heart with, you know, general, genuine emotions and intentions. My advice, if I can impart some advice, would be wherever you go, take what you've learned, always be proud from where you came from, and always be ambassadors for the city, no matter where you're at. Promote the city like you, uh, whenever you can, because I, I assure you that people will ask you, "Well, where are you from?" And always be proud of where you came from, okay? I started volunteering at sixteen years old, um, and it was when the city was trying to, they were trying to disincorporate the city, and so I, I took a stand. But anyway, that's not about me. But what I'm trying to say is, always be proud of where, where you come from, always give of yourself, wherever you are, volunteer, whether it's a Kiwanis Club, whether it's in, in government, wherever it is, volunteer, because that will build your networking skills, it will build your network, and opportunities will come to you, I guarantee you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May we also have our special guest from SISD stand for a round of applause. These teachers do site visits with us after school, they check in with each of the site supervisors, and they've also come in on weekends to see what the students are doing.
Awesome.
Ms. Anaya?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Raúl Durán?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number ten, public hearing of an ordinance providing that a portion of Montevideo Street be permanently closed and providing that this ordinance shall become effective immediately. Six forty-six, public comment, public hearing is now open.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just to reiterate, my name's Melissa, I came last month, just to reiterate my take on the issue at hand. As I mentioned before, we just want to make sure that we ask for a consistent solution to the issue that, that's been going on since the building of the IDEA School, you know, so that we make sure that from the construction, even right now when they're still adding to the school, that you do something about it because we continue to see the heavy trucks, and they're doing a lot of potholes in our streets as well. So we just want to make sure, you know, we understand that there has to be an emergency gate there, we, we're okay with that, but make it as an emergency, because picking up the child after school is not constituted as an emergency. I would suggest something like, if something did happen at the campus, then yes, of course, we would see heavy usage by, you know, law enforcement or what have you, but not for an everyday use. So we just want to make sure that we have a consistent solution to the issue, and we ask that you support us in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six forty-nine, public hearing is now closed. Item number eleven, second reading and adoption of an ordinance providing that a portion of Montevideo Street be permanently closed and providing that this ordinance shall become effective immediately.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I would suggest we go into executive session at some point before council votes on it.
Okay, we'll do it after.
Getting the mayor and members of the council, Mike Mina, city planner, uh, at the last council meeting, uh, it was brought to your all's attention to introduce an ordinance to restrict the use of the facility via Montevideo. Uh, since the development of the school, there has been heavy use of that arterial weight. Uh, we have received many, uh, complaints from the public. With that is that we have also worked with the school officials, uh, letting them know of the, uh, situation. Part of the remedy that they had suggested to comply with this is that they have built in a component on their, uh, grounds to accommodate certain traffic. But nonetheless, because at the time when the school was permitted for use, uh, in construction, uh, the city didn't have the capacity to call for a traffic impact analysis. So essentially now is that as the school gets bigger, uh, we weren't able to mitigate that. So that's why we have a lot of traffic. So if you will, is that normally when schools are built, there's a component where you incorporate the transport of students by the school as well. Uh, we know that that obviously here doesn't exist. So essentially is that this campus is like UTEP, if you will, there's a lot of, uh, travel to and from the facility.
Mr. Perez?
Mr. Mina, question. Um, you mentioned that at, when the, the building was, well, the school was being built, we didn't have the capacity to do what now? As a, as a city, we didn't have the capacity to, to request or to enforce something, what was that?
Uh, traffic impact analysis.
Okay, so then, um, as a school expands and it's new construction, we couldn't do that at that time?
We should though.
So there was a master plan ordinance that was approved by you all a couple of weeks, months ago. Uh, when they permitted for Phase Two, that still wasn't in place. One of the things that we did in that meeting, uh, I was there to include, uh, our law enforcement component from the city, and we had requested, uh, as a courtesy, a circulation plan. And so, we were trying to assess how many vehicles will be activated, if you will, with the new phase. Uh, we never received a circulation plan, and it wasn't until we got the plans that we started to see how many, uh, how many rooms were going to generate that traffic. Uh, as a functionality of that, uh, when our building official commented that they were, uh, not calculating correctly the parking requirement, uh, the school, uh, its representative went to the Board of Adjustments, asked for a variance, the variance was denied. And so, again, part of the mitigation that they had was to build a, if you will, a road around their campus so that they can accommodate some of the traffic.
Ms. Ellos?
I have a question. I know we've inherited a lot of, you know, past issues, and, um, unfortunately, some of the ordinances that we have in place or had in place have hurt our city. And so therefore, we don't have, you know, we didn't have the impact of the, um, traffic analysis. But what can we do moving forward? The situation can't continue this way. There has to be a happy medium. There has to be a, a, an ordinance that says, from this point forward, and it has to be a bye, bye. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, a- and actually, uh, this body passed said ordinance. So with the master planning ordinance, there was a revision of the requirements that does include the traffic impact analysis.
No, and I understand, but that's, we're not here or there for this item anymore. However, what can we do to, there has to be something that we can come up with that, uh, benefits everybody.
Yes, ma'am, and I think we've done that, so if anybody comes in now, uh, the city does have the, the authority to ask the development to produce a traffic impact analysis.
No, no, and I understand that, but I'm talking about the situation that's going on with the school and the residents right now. What is it that we can do to alleviate the situation, either by changing an ordinance, adding an ordinance, adding a, a, you know, a rule, for lack of a better word?
Right, so, so, I guess what I would suggest is that moving forward, and, and we actually are practicing it right now, uh, with the inspectors and the building official, is that when we're reviewing plans, uh, we're taking a closer look at the technical components. So if you allow me some liberty, is that, for example, like the ponding areas. Uh, before, uh, we would look at a ponding area and ask for certain things. So now with the, with the ordinance that was approved, it's actually a requirement. But more importantly is that when you look at the development and what we see on the plans, it may change for some component. Uh, we may have to have flexibility with the developer to move the pond, uh, to relocate a fire hydrant, uh, so it's very dynamic. Now, when it comes to the construction of such facilities, is that we always have to partner with the developers because it is quite known that a lot of the areas here are landlocked. And so to provide accessibility to everybody, I think would be the goal of the city, to ensure that there's an element of safety there. So again, going back to the IDEA School, is that when I reviewed the plans that were approved, the gate was present, and I could not find any demonstration that it would solely be used for emergency services. So again, when the construction came, we did notify them that that road wasn't designed as a route to carry these semis. And so that's why we're here now.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I know you did not satisfy Ms. Via Lovos's question. What she's trying to say is that, what are we going to do? We already know that we already passed the master plan, so anything set forward, moving on from when we took action, is already fixed. What she's really asking is, what can we do to remedy this situation that has occurred before we did that? And the answer to it should be nothing, because we cannot do something that is proactive in date, correct?
Well, I, I don't think that we can re, you know, I guess the, the components that, we can't exact something, um, and reactivate it to the past.
Right, that's, that's what she was asking. So that's what you, okay.
Ms. Ellos?
It's unfortunate because we can't foresee the future for everything. However, this does pose a, a, a serious, um, issue with traffic. Are we going to be proactive or react after something happens? Are we going to be proactive or react after something happens? So what can we do here, Mr. Martinez, I'm gonna put you on the spot here, as what can the city do to alleviate the situation? Ms., I'm sorry, I'm waiting for Mayor to recognize me.
Ms. Nevada?
So there's several options that we have, and one of them is right in front of you, right, closing down that intersection. Also, the Chief of Police does have the authority to, if it causes a safety concern, he can actually shut down the operation. If it's, if it comes to a safety concern that. However, we do like to have conversations with Idea. I think the last meeting was that council was going to meet with Idea to see if you can come to a happy medium. I don't know if that's happened or not. But our job is, as administration, is to bring it to you. Like, right now, the option is just to close that road and just open it for emergencies only, but we do wanna discuss that further during executive session. But the police is out there and is able to close down it, in case it does become a safety concern. And the school has been notified. I don't know if you wanna add anything, Chief?
Yes, Mayor and Council, they burdened Chief of Police. So like Mike, Mr. Medina was saying, we did, out of courtesy, meet with the school regarding the traffic concerns that the neighborhood had, as well as ourselves, because if we move the traffic out of one location, then where do we put it? The simple fact is, is the school capacity and the traffic that comes with it won't fit anywhere that we've, that we've seen so far in the design plans, and we certainly don't wanna put that traffic into the neighborhood. We have been out there ticketing, so my ultimate go-to for this was that, in the name of public safety, if I have a traffic issue where I could face serious injury and/or fatalities, I will close that road and that operation will stop. If that means that the school closes, then it will close.
Mr. Perez?
And I just wanna ask, or make a comment. So then, the road that was built is to try and alleviate the traffic, obviously, within the campus, and then out, then the egress from the campus. So then on Montevideo, is that the road? Wouldn't it be possible to exclude any heavy commercial traffic from trafficking through there? One, two, couldn't Montevideo be turned into a school zone that would make the traffic slow down? And at that point, you would have ability to, to ticket people that were not observing the speed laws?
So from what I've seen, that would need some additional traffic calming measures to be put in place. We recently experimented with rumble strips from Buford. I would suggest that we would look at something like that, additional signage, sidewalks, lighting. We'd have to make sure that the pedestrian and/or traffic safety that is traveling there into the neighborhood also has access to their residences, which they have the right to. Our enforcement so far has not been commercial vehicles. It's been people blocking driveways, which you can't do.
Right, right. All right, thank you.
Mr. Devon?
Will that also impact Sanchez's school also? The school that's a little bit further down?
I don't believe so, sir. My understanding is that what they load, in terms of the traffic, is on Villavista itself. There is no other avenue that they use to transport the children.
Because both schools use that same road, don't they?
Villavista, yes, sir. However, here, the conversation has been that an enormous amount of traffic, and regardless of the traffic, we have a mix of vehicle classifications that come in. So you have the parents coming in, and you have these heavy vehicles coming in, transporting the materials. So essentially, what we're doing is that we're asking for council to provide some type of direction on mitigating Montevideo.
Okay.
But they do have two entry points from Villavista, from the Idea School.
Ms. Ellos?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, I mean, I've been to the school, they have plenty of parking, to the side, to the front. The reason they don't allow is for safety reasons. They have that gate, right, for their students, for safety reason?
Yes, ma'am. So my understanding, how the operation works, is that they feel that a closed campus is a better campus for the security and the safety of the children.
And I get it. Could we request that they move the gate, or add a gate to, you know, and then use that parking lot for, like any other school does, any public school? They use their parking, you know, they allocate the edges to come in and out.
What I would certainly say is that, I think everything is on the table. We have attempted to communicate that. I would say that they have mitigated to some element of trying to ensure that the traffic doesn't become a greater nuisance. But the component right now is that we have construction vehicles coming in and out. So the operation of the school is that, from Montevideo, they're able to access the school so that the parents can drop them off. And I have witnessed that during the regular business hours, that's when we have the commercial vehicles come in. So in terms of mitigation, yes, we can go in there and restrict certain vehicle classes. We've done that before. And like the chief said, is that there are traffic calming mechanisms that we can deploy as a component to that. But I think as it was expressed by our attorney, is that there's other things that we should consider in relationship to access to properties.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Our motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Second.
Mayor, if you're gonna go in just for this one, I think that's sufficient. If you wanna do the rest of the executive session items all at once, I would simply announce that and make them part of the motion.
All right.
Motion to address all executive session items?
For the purpose of consulting with your attorney.
For the purpose of consulting our city attorney.
Second.
So just for the record, we're doing number eleven on the agenda, plus, we're doing thirty...
Thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four, thirty-five.
Okay. Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Seven oh three, we're now in executive session.